Mr. County Manager, Executive, and all those kind of things you like to be called.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that very glowing introduction. I appreciate that. The agenda is as presented tonight. No, no changes needed.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
It's a move.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries and again with Mr. Echols' direction because he's the great legal mind. I assume that since all commissioners are out here, I need to be sure that his vote. Yes, okay. So, all right. That gets us to the consent agenda. Number one is consideration for approval of the September 2020 treasurer check register. You can look at it and see how much people make. I thought I wished I worked for the county full time. Number two, consideration for approval of September 2020 finance check registers. Number three, consideration of the fiscal year 21 budget adjustment. That's in number four, Resolution Number 20-21-24. And then number four is the consideration for award of proposal Number 202102, Correctional Food Management，在 inmate commissary and banking services. Then number five is the consideration of grant agreement Number 20E2684 within the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. And then number six, which is the approval of contracts with juvenile services for housing of juvenile detainees. Does anyone have any questions or any comments about those things on the consent agenda?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. All right. That gets us to new business.
Item number one, consideration of the proclamation declaring November 8 through the 14th as National Nurse Practitioners Week 2020. Well, we do this on a regular basis. This is the last time after many years that I'll be able to do it. And the declaration says, whereas nurse practitioners, or NPs, serve as trusted healthcare providers for patients in our nation, or state, or county, and I might say our jail. And whereas in this year 2020, we celebrate the International Year of the Nurse and the Midwife, and whereas NPs, not MPs, NPs, are working tirelessly to diagnose and treat patients with COVID-19 and to combat community spread nationwide while grieving NP colleagues who have lost their lives during the pandemic, and whereas NPs work to expand access to care in undisturbed communities like us in health disparities and combat systematic racism in healthcare, whereas NPs provide high-quality primary acute and specialty healthcare services while focusing on health promotion, disease prevention, health education, and counseling, guiding patients to make smarter health and lifestyle choices every day. Whereas, NPs are highly skilled practitioners with advanced education and clinical training, building upon their initial registered nurse preparation. Whereas, the confidence that patients have in NP delivered health and care is evidenced by more than 1 billion visits made annually to NPs across the country. Whereas, more than five decades of research demonstrates the high quality of care provided to NPs. Whereas, there are more than 290,000 licensed NPs in the United States at 800 in the state of New Mexico. And whereas, better utilization of NPs through modernized state laws and improved policies, it creates better health through a more accessible, efficient, cost-effective, and higher-quality healthcare system. Whereas, 22 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and the Northern Mariana Islands have implemented full practice authority for NPs like New Mexico, granting patients full and direct access to the outstanding care offered by these healthcare professionals. Whereas, leading governmental and policy entities, including the National Academy of Medicine, the National Council, the State Boards of Nursing, National Governance Association, and Federal Trade Commission have taken notice of the benefits of NP's full practice authority and have endorsed such a regulatory model. Whereas, San Juan County is proud to recognize and honor the service of NPs to our state and/or county, and I might add to our cities. Now, therefore, the San Juan County Board of County Commissioners has hereby proclaimed the week of November 8 through 14, 2020, as National Nurse Practitioners Week in recognition of the countless contributions nurse practitioners have made over the past half century and will continue to make to the health and well-being of citizens in our state. Well, I think I read that rather eloquently. And considering, of course, I'm married to a nurse practitioner. So.
She checks on your mental health regularly?
Regularly. That's right. All right. May I have a motion to approve that proclamation?
To approve.
Been moved and seconded by Commissioner Sully. Is there any discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? And I believe it was unanimous. I think Commissioner Sully also said aye. All right. That gets us, that gets us to item number two. Consideration of Resolution Number 202125, recognizing the objections of the San Juan County Board of County Commissioners to certain proposals before the New Mexico Civil Rights Commission. Mr. Doug Echols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. By way of a little bit of background, in the wake of the George Floyd incident, legislators around the country were taking action to expand liability and to take other actions which they thought might create higher levels of law enforcement accountability for misconduct. Some states, I would suggest, insofar as to perhaps lose their minds, including the state to our north, which imposed a $25,000 deductible on any law enforcement officer or other individual who was successfully sued in any sort of civil rights litigation. They also created an independent state court for cause of action. I'm actually very proud of what our legislature did because they didn't get caught up in the hubbub. They established a commission to study it and to make recommendations. The commission is chaired by former Chief Justice Bill Bossen, and our friend Senator Steve Novell is a member of the commission. We've had a lot of discussion with Senator Novell and others. And New Mac has been extremely active in participating in front of the commission and trying to explain to them the difficulties we have with any sort of proposal to expand liability. None of us, I think it's fair to say, are against accountability for individuals who violate constitutional rights. The bills which have been suggested do not just apply to law enforcement and jail personnel. They would apply to any government official at any level who might, in some fashion, violate someone's civil rights. So that could be a school teacher, a school administrator. It could be somebody in a building department, a fire department. It could be anyone. So, we've encouraged them to be cautious and deliberate in making any decisions that they might make. Senator Novell suggested that we prepare a resolution setting forth what we believe would be appropriate objections to expanding to a state court action which would eliminate the federal defense of qualified immunity in lieu of requiring individuals to file under 42 USC 1983, which, as an established body of jurisprudence, typically is done in federal court, though it doesn't have to be. It can be done in state court, and we've had several cases here. Frankly, in San Juan County, we tend to like these cases in state court because our juries are much more conservative than juries in federal court. We've had a great deal of success here. We received word that Friday will be their last meeting, and then they'll be developing whatever they're going to do. And so, we bring this resolution to you today so that if you approve it, we can send it to the commission and the Civil Rights Commission to understand where the San Juan County commission stands. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate Mr. Echols' putting together a document that is precise and concise. It's to the points of some of the, I don't know, call them absurdities that can happen as a result of pushing this pendulum beyond where it needs to go and making it more about punishing everyone instead of just making sure that officers who might have a problem are not dealt with properly. So, thank you.
Thank you. One thing I would say, one of the frustrations, and it's the commission's frustration, it's not ours. We all know our insurance will go up, but nobody knows how much until we start seeing what happens. But it's not beyond the realm of possibility to have it double or triple.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? All right. Been moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? All right. I believe it was unanimous. Thank you. All right. Item number three, consideration of Resolution Number 202123 and agreement to transfer Harvest Gold Water System to Apple Orchard Mutual Domestic Water Consumers Association. Mr. Sawyer, and I also believe Mr. Ammon Burton is here. Please feel free to come up during Mr. Sawyer's presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as I'm sure you remember, Harvest Gold Subdivision's water system failed in 2016 and was placed under a boil advisory by the New Mexico Environment Department. So, the residents of the subdivision created Apple Orchard Mutual Domestic Water Consumers Association to provide safe and clean water to the subdivision. And the county helped by serving as fiscal agent for $2.35 million grant from the Environment Department to decommission the old system and replace it with a new water distribution system and water tank. And the county also purchased attractive land to gain access to the water tank site.
I believe we also delivered water at times, right?
We did, Mr. Chairman. Delivered water and coordinated some resources with the, with the tent, with the pump, with the city of Bloomfield. Yeah, we're very active, working with Mr. Burton and his board. It was a, it was a team effort across the board.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry. So, the water system was completed, construction, May 2020. Now, the county is ready to transfer the system to Apple Orchard. And we asked the New Mexico Environment Department, and we didn't need their involvement to transfer the system. Like, there was another system that they had. Staff requests the commission to approve Resolution 20-21-23, which transfers the system, the agreement with Apple Orchard to transfer the system, a bill of sale, and a reclaim deed that would transfer that parcel of property over to Apple Orchard. And as you know, Mr. Burton, it's your day to answer the question.
All right. Let's start off. May I have a motion to approve?
To approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. And I, you guys, men were troopers. No, I mean, you had to boil, couldn't drink, was being vandalized, protests. I don't remember how many years ago it was when Mr. Stark and I visited also. My daughter was in undergraduate school in 16 or 17. And I actually wrote a paper on Harvest Gold. That's how I, Mike learned a lot more about it also. And it was just the travesty what you guys went through.
Well, our board, and we, it's been a long haul that, you know, there was a lot of people and so we couldn't do it.
Right.
But we've done it. And it's working. And, you know, it's paying for itself. Our secretary right there.
Please introduce your board.
Our secretary and our treasurer.
All right.
But we couldn't have done it without you, obviously. We're ready to keep on going.
Mr. Crowley. Mr. Burton, we met three years ago and a number of times, and I want to say thank you because without your stepping up and making sure that of these others who are willing to step up with you were involved, you have solidified a very hard-to-do thing. And I don't think you guys get enough thanks. I mean, people, if something happens to the water system, they just complain, and they have no idea why it got there and how it got any better and the fact that somebody appropriated money and that there were legislators involved to ask for the money and that we were the fiscal agent as the county. And we jumped through a lot of hoops and made it happen. And thank you for you and your board and the part that you played in making that happen and making safe drinking water for the people of that area and your subdivisions. And just thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Any other discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Believe it was a motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. And thank you, board. Yeah. All right. That gets us to item number four, which is consideration of access and utility easement on the Jenkins Ranch property. Mr. Joe Sawyer.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in 2008, the county purchased a 6.68 acre parcel west of the county courthouse here in Azteca. And we call the Jenkins Ranch parcel after the family that previously owned it. When the county purchased the property, there were two existing residential properties to the south of the parcel that were accessed by an existing driveway on the southern part of the parcel that the county bought. The sellers did not reserve an easement through the driveway when they sold the land to the county. But the county has now been approached by a Realtor who wants to establish a permanent easement. The county is in the process of surveying the easement. But we provided a map in your packet that shows the proposed easement path with the little black dotted line. The county would retain access rights in the easement so we could access the property that we purchased. The staff recommends approval of the proposed access.
All right. Jenkins Ranch. They named that after that cat from Meet the Parents? Remember that cat, Jenkins?
Jenkins, yeah. Yes. So, if I look at it this way, north, as we're sitting, right that way. And so, as you go down the access road to the Jenkins subdivision, it's down a ways, and then it runs to the east off of this road.
It does, and it's just, it's just north of those residences that are shown.
So, I see a dotted line, and it goes toward the red house, but I don't, only see two sides of dotted line. So, is it a zero property line on the easement on the red roof part?
You said a zero property line? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't.
An ease, a zero easement. I see two sides with dashes on it.
Right.
So.
Where's the rest of that?
It looks like.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Crowley, I could answer that one. So, the, the, the south side of the easement is made up by the property line. So, what you're seeing is the, see the dash lines, and then you see the white, white and black line. That's the south side of the easement. That's the property line for those two properties that actually needing access. But we inadvertently cut off access when we purchased the property. Ideally, our property line should have ended where the black dotted line is at so that we didn't encroach on their access. Now, in fairness, though, we had granted the individual who was occupying the white-roofed house a life estate. And so, really, access wasn't a problem until that individual passed here recently. And now, the property owner's looking to sell both of these properties. So, and that's how we were notified of it, is they were working through, trying to shore up all the documents necessary for closing, that they didn't have dedicated access to both of those properties.
Mr. Chair, I'm glad to see that we're fixing this now instead of after the fact. You know, someone purchases and says, well, I can't get financing because. And so, it's just good to see that we're moving forward with getting this easement established.
Mr. Beckston.
So, the property line is right along the red roofed house, right along the house?
Just in front of the, of the structure. Yeah, that, that wasn't, that's not an ideal property line. So, they'd have access, it'd be an access and utility easement.
So, it's a 60-foot wide easement?
Correct. But.
If it gets accessed by the city, they're probably going to want minimal 26 feet for the road itself.
For the road itself.
Plus sidewalks and stuff. So, there's more than enough to do that there without the road being in there along the side of the house, the driveway being in the house. But it also maintains a second ingress egress for us in the development of the property. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crowley. Any other questions, discussions? There being none, may I have a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? It appears it was unanimous. All right. That gets us to item number five. Consideration of the 12th Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Detention Center Services. It says, Mr. Webb, I believe that is.
Devin?
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Hold on. Mr. Echols, at what point do we just do a new agreement rather than do like 12, 13, 14 amendments?
Whenever we're asked to.
Just curious. Okay. He's just on the phone. Okay. Go ahead, Daniel.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, I am here to talk about the FY22 per DM rate, which unfortunately, for the entities, is going to see a 25.8% increase from where we are today. Current per DM rate is 85.62 due to our very low number of bed days. This past year, FY20, I think it was, we're down 46,440 bed days from the previous year. So, that, based on that. So that based on that, using the formula that was agreed upon many years ago, the per diem rate for FY22 is going to be 10772.
All right. And like you said, I mean, we're not really making any changes that were unexpected. They're simply changes that are made pursuant to the per diem rate that's already in the that's formula driven in the contract.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's absolutely correct. This is a formula driven contract. It's very similar to the same agreements we have with the cities on the animal shelters. That's that's how they arrive at their per diem or per animal cost.
Yes, Commissioner Crowley.
Mr. Stark, how do we handle the city of Kirkland?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Crowley, since they have not put in place any municipal code, they're all their charges. Well, first off, they contract with us for law enforcement services. Second, then all their related charges are filed as state charges, so they end up becoming state prisoners since they don't have municipal code in place.
Hey, Mike, it's all effect on juvenile services, right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sullivan, could you repeat that question?
He asked if it applies to the juvenile.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, it does not. This is strictly for the adult detention center. This is the agreement we have in place with the city of Bloomfield, Farmington, and Aztec in regards to the per diem rate for their respective detainees.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Has been moved in your second. Second. Smickner, second. Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? No. It appears it was unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Item six would be Mr. Echols. It says, report of inspection of detention center. I believe we need to approve a resolution, is that right?
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I don't need to rag you anymore about going out to inspect the jail. Three of you went up, filed your reports, and made all of the appropriate statutory filings. So I asked that you approve the resolution, file it away, and sometime next summer we can start reminding some of you to do it.
All right, is there a motion to approve the report on inspection detention center? Been moved and seconded by Commissioner Beckstead. Is there any other discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? It appears the vote was unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, that gets us to a report from the county manager. Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Janks. I think it's Mr. Janks. Not Jenkins. Yeah. I hope I don't end up down the toilet like he did. So just want to give you a couple of updates. I know a couple of you were on the phone last they're on the call last Thursday, the ETA, Energy Transition Act request for information. We are working closely with a lot of local companies that would more than likely stay at a good chance at applying for funding and would and would qualify for that funding. And we're collectively working, I just want you to know, with with San Juan College, the city of Farmington, and Four Corners Economic Development Group to help with those applications and potentially bringing forth a a letter of support from those four entities, supporting those respective companies that are looking to apply from our area. As you might have heard, it appears that the 100-mile standard does apply, and so affected communities could reach as far as Gallup. Our hope is if we show we have very suitable and excellent excellent applications from here, supported by the community, that that appeared to be one of the requirements, based on the conversation that was had that day, that we would stand a better chance to see the majority of the $20 million stay here in San Juan County and not migrate out of San Juan County. And Commissioner Totino, I might add, is a convener on that on that group, and Chairman Fortner, you're you're on the committee. So and all those applications are due October 31st, and it did not appear that they were going to be willing to accept late applications.
But I think it should be noted that the application itself does not have to be so expansive that you can't complete it. It's the ideas they're looking for in a rough draft.
Mr. Chairman, you're correct. Yeah, you don't need a formal business plan or a budget necessarily. They're just looking for the idea, the concept, on how those really, at the end of the day, it's how do we find replacement jobs for those displaced workers who potentially may come from San Juan Generating Station and the mine? We we hope as this commission has so supported and chant energy, we hope they're successful in their efforts to continue operations beyond 2022. But if that were not to happen, this is the safety net that will hopefully lead to replacement jobs. Item number two is just an update on our business continuity grants. Today, San Juan County has eight applications that have been approved for a total of $45,000. Farmington has approved 75, Aztec 30, Bloomfield 23, and Kirtland 4. As I've mentioned at the last meeting, once again, just a plea to our community, if you are a business in the unincorporated part of San Juan County, please submit an application to us. It's available online. It's right front and center in our website. We want to make certain that the dollars that we've received from the state stay right here. So just giving you an update on that because we do need businesses to apply. I'm not certain if it's just a lack of interest, not interested in going through the process, or or just fearful of requesting a grant from the government. This is about low strings attached attached as you can get.
Mr. Sullivan, go ahead.
I just wondered if it's just because of all of it is they just people just don't understand the concept of it.
I think that's part of it, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sullivan, yeah, that could certainly be the case. That's why I keep messing making the same announcement here, meeting after meeting, that we are here to to provide those resources if businesses need help in applying and try to get them qualified. You do have to meet some minimum requirements regarding annual revenues and the number of employees, you know, under 2 million and under 50. But I would assume a majority of our businesses out there are small businesses that would would qualify. And so I just want to mention that to you all again. And then, of course, go ahead.
County manager, what how did you say that, Jack, earlier, manager, whatever? Anyway, I guess what I was going to ask you, it's not, it's got to be business generated, Dan, it's not facility generated.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sullivan, yes, it has to be a business activity, which can include not-for-profit entities are eligible. But but it, yeah, it can't be just a it's not a stimulus check per se to an individual. You have to have a registered business with us in New Mexico, set up with a CRS number, paying taxes to the state.
Okay.
What? Hello, Mr. Mike.
Last item, just the update on the governor's press conference today. There are some new restrictions that have been put in place specifically related to retail establishments that are that need to, you know, last Thursday, the establishment serving alcohol needed to close by 10 o'clock. Now that's being applied to retail establishments, and those businesses that are selling goods or services directly to a customer, which includes grocery stores and big box stores, will now all have to close at 10:00 PM. There also is an additional requirement for food and drink establishments. They must complete the New Mexico Safe Certification Training Program, which educates workers about the state's required and recommended COVID-safe practices. If they fail to not do that, if they if they do do that, they'd be able to continue to offer limited indoor dining at the maximum 25% occupancy. That these all go into effect October 30th, these these new rules. And they'd still be able to continue outdoor dining with a 75% maximum occupancy with tables at least six feet apart. The last item that could potentially be concerning for some businesses, and we assume this is going to just be the nonessential businesses and not apply to local governments, that businesses that incur four rapid responses, so that is an employee who tests positive today, were required, all businesses are required to report those cases to the New Mexico Environment Department. If you have four of those in a two-week time period, you'll have to close your business for two weeks. So that potentially could be problematic. And just reviewing the state's list online with Mr. Neely earlier, there'd be a few businesses in our area that would have to close. Our concern was immediately, could that apply to us as an essential business? And we're still actually awaiting clarity from the governor's office. We want to make sure that somehow we would be in a situation where we couldn't conduct an election, we couldn't respond to fire calls, or we couldn't have our detention centers open. I don't think that was the intent, but we certainly want to make sure that that standard wouldn't apply to us.
Mr. Stark, is there going to be a road being curfewed enforcement?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beckstead, I'm reading through the press release they put out, and I don't see anything that refers to a curfew in here. But I assume that what we heard last Thursday is that all law enforcement officials, regardless of what agency they reside in, be it game and fish, you know, be it NMED, of course, state police, that they will be out enforcing the new provisions that were enacted last Thursday. And I assume that all of these would also apply to other businesses. So in essence, that may may lead to a curfew if there's very strict enforcement. All right, that's all I have for you tonight.
All right, next is reports from elected officials and department heads. Please come forward. For the record, state your name. Yep, Tanya's in the back.
Okay, Kim Martin, Chief Financial Officer. I wanted to come before you today to give you an update. As you remember, during our second budget workshop back in July, you had requested that the finance department come before you and give you an update as to where we're standing on a monthly basis. So as of today, we received our GRT payment for the month of October. It was roughly $2.5 million. That is slightly higher than what we've budgeted. Right now, we're tracking 35% above budget or with budget. With that being said, 33.3% of the year has passed, so we're about 2% higher than what we're budgeting currently. But keep in mind that that was based on a 16% decrease in GRT. So now we're still roughly about 14.3% behind still. So, yeah, we're hopefully it's going to see that continue to go up, but we are still behind. We also received the state GRT equalization payment. That was about $1 million more than what we had budgeted. But keep in mind that that's based on the GRT per capita. So the state takes our GRT capita and compares it against the rest of the state. And so the more money we receive basically indicates that our GRT is not doing very well compared to the rest of the state. So, yes, we did receive more money, but it means that our economy and our GRT just are not are very, very sluggish. And so we also received $1.8 million for our the CARES Act for the local government. The U.S. Treasury OIG had came out with clarification on the how we needed on items that we could report, and they had declared that the public safety is considered substantially dedicated. So with that being said, we did not have to justify each individual employee, the hours that they spend. We didn't have to go that detailed. So we were able to report $1.8 million of expenditures of sheriff's. So with that being said, that money will come in-house, and we'll be able to utilize that money to help my PPE or other COVID-related expenditures. We've not received the oil and gas yet for October, but through September, we are still annually $697,000 under budget. So oil and gas just continue to struggle, and so with any hopes, maybe, you know, things will pick back up, but with COVID, it's hard to say. So, but anyway, that is my report, and I stand for your questions.
Questions, anyone? All right, thank you, Kim.
Okay, thank you.
Any other reports from elected officials and department heads? Tanya Shelby. For the records, Tanya.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can we have a report from Tanya on the election status?
What do you think she's here for?
Well, I didn't know.
All right, well, go ahead, Tanya. Go ahead, Tanya.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the commission. I'd like to tell you, I think you all already know this, that San Juan County voters are amazing, and San Juan County poll workers are amazing. We after by the time we close tonight, we will have hit 25% already voted. So with that, the numbers, and of course, there, I mean, it's every time I look at it, you've seen the line, of course, isn't that bad out here, but we've had voters that have waited in line for over an hour to vote. Ever since Saturday, the lines have kind of depleted now that we have all six sites open, but all sites are busy. It's amazing. The voters are being very, I don't even want to say sympathetic, but they're so grateful. You know, they they don't mind standing in line. We've never had lines like this in San Juan County. But everybody understands all of the restrictions that we're under. You know, we're practicing this six-foot social distancing, wearing masks, we're only allowed to have so many in our sites, and everybody is just, it's amazing. And the best part for me is I hear them thanking my coworkers. It's great. So 13,374 have voted early as of the time I ran this report. And I want to touch just a little bit on Gateway. So Gateway had 2,551. 1,651 voted at the library. So we're very, very thankful to be able to utilize the library this time, or we would have had all of that congestion just at Gateway. The Bloomfield Cultural Center has voted 1,126. CCSD Business Office in Shiprock has voted 893. Newcom, our little tiny Newcom Fire Station, has voted 296. And our county clerk's office has voted 6,857. So and as far as absentee, we have sent out 11,339 absentee ballots.
Those requested?
Yes. Yes. And we have already received 5,677, so 50%. So and we can accept absentee ballot applications up until midnight tonight. So tomorrow will be the last day that we can go on out.
Tell me what time does this close here?
So our hours here, we open at 7:00 AM, and we close at 7:00 PM. And that's Monday through Friday, and Saturday's 10 to 6:00. And all of our alternate sites are open 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and all sites are open 10 to 6:00 on Saturdays.
Any questions from Tanya? All right, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right, we're still at reports from elected officials and department heads. Mr. Devon.
Chairman and Commissioners, Devon Neely, Public Relations Manager. I'm before you this afternoon as the chair of the San Juan County Complete Counts Committee, as you well know. In October of 2018, the San Juan County Commission impaneled the San Juan County Complete Counts Committee to effect a complete count and support the 2020 census. There have been numerous challenges to the 2020 census, and I won't get into that because we don't have the time. As of the 16th of October, the 2020 census has completed. We don't have final counts, but I do have some numbers for you today. In the United States, 99.9% of homes, housing units have been enumerated. 67% of those people responded to the census on their own. In New Mexico, again, the Census Bureau reports a 99.9% enumeration of housing units. 58.7% of those folks responded on their own, which makes New Mexico 48 in the nation for self-response. 41.2% of housing units in New Mexico were touched by a census worker during non-response follow-up. For San Juan County, 51.7% of housing units responded, putting us 2,371st in the nation among counties for self-response. Aztec responded at a 61.5% rate. Bloomfield, a 57.3%, Farmington, 65.9%, and the town of Kirtland responding at a 61.3% rate. All of those reduced from the 2010 census, unfortunately, but with many challenges this year. Not surprising. Not great reductions, but reductions nonetheless. Mr. Totacini, I know you would ask. The self-response rate on the Navajo Nation was 22.5%. 5.7% of that was online, which speaks to the disparity in availability of broadband and internet in general on the Navajo Nation. The way the Census Bureau handled the census this year really didn't make it very easy for folks on the Navajo Nation to respond. So hopefully, in the next 10 years, they can work on both the availability of internet on the Navajo Nation and the way the Census Bureau requests response by tribal nations. Your fun fact of the day, Los Alamos County ranks seventh highest response rate among counties in the U.S. 83.8% self-response for Los Alamos County. And with that, I stand for your questions.
All right. Thanks, sir.
That's right.
All right, any other reports from elected officials and/or department heads? There being none, there's comments input from the general public. Three minutes per person on subjects the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. Well, formal action will be taken at this meeting, which relates to comments or input from the general public. However, if you would like to speak, you can do it by hand-delivering a note here by noon on the days of our meetings, or you can mail it to the county commission if it's received by business, close of business on Monday before the meetings, or you can fax it here, or you can email it. Do we have anyone that wishes to comment publicly? All right, Mr. Chairman, we have none here.
Any other comments?
All right, there appears, there is no public comment then. Do we have need for a closed session?
Do not.
There being none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Been moved to adjourn. Is your second? Second, any discussion? Those in favor say aye. We are hereby adjourned. Thank you, Sully.